Conference will now be recorded.
So I'm going to bring this work session of the Port Orford City Council to order at 5:30 on Thursday, November 13th. Hello, everyone. We haven't had a lot of work sessions, so I was just asking Joseph, gosh, what do we do with the work session? Are we supposed to say the Pledge of Allegiance and all that stuff? And he said, yeah, we are. So let's start, actually, we'll start with the roll call on the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll talk about the work session. So Counselor Brennan?
Here.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Rask?
Here.
Counselor Lovendahl?
Sarah here.
And we are, Counselor Pogwist is not present, and Counselor Webb is not here. And we have Administrator Radcliffe here, and Recorder Joseph Harrison with us as well. Okay, so now, please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, so we are having this work session today to just talk about this feasibility, wastewater reuse feasibility study, and this whole project a little bit. And if you recall, work sessions are times when there's no decisions or actions taken, but they're opportunities for us to discuss what's this topic. And I think, in my mind, the goal for this meeting is to, you know, do a review of the report, focusing on some of the high points, which I've asked Joseph to maybe make copies of some of those parts that are most relevant, see if anybody has any questions, so that we can be lined up for the next phase in this process. And so that's, that's the goal. And then if anybody has any questions and concerns, or about kind of where we are in the process, where we're going, all that kind of stuff, this is a good time to discuss it. Anything to add from your perspective, Melissa?
No, not, not until we get going.
Okay. Well, so then, I would propose that we maybe, did, did people get a chance to read this well, so we don't have to? I mean, we could start by kind of doing a review of the whole thing if we needed to, if that would be helpful, or we could just go to sort of the heart of the key things. What is your preference?
The heart of the matter.
Going to the heart of the matter. Okay. Excellent.
Isn't that a song?
So I will just say, for those following along at home, which we have, Jen, it's just that a lot of this report goes through the basics of the wastewater system, and kind of the regulatory framework for using wastewater. And then you get to Section 4 and 5, which I think are really the important parts for us. So let's just look at the wastewater reuse priorities. And so that's the first page on the little handout that we have. And the priorities listed are, I think, relatively good ones. I mean, everybody looked at it. It's kind of focused on making sure we have our own house in order first. So I don't know if anybody has any things you want to say about the priorities. If not, then we can just look at also the recommended improvements summary. And so I think this is maybe a key thing, and that just goes on to the next page. And one of the really key parts, so this little list on the page, bottom of page 42, top of page 43, is basically the overview of the improvements that we would need to do to, for the city to use its recycled wastewater. And key in that list is the last item, which is, and potentially, an upgraded treatment system to meet water reuse requirements that will need to be determined through a forthcoming wastewater treatment plant facility assessment. So that's, that last item is going to cover kind of like, I think, a multitude of things that we already know. So just on that little section, on that little section, does anybody have any questions or thoughts about that part?
They say roadway and utility corridor repairs. So do they mean just where the pipeline would go? Or do they mean any of the roadways around the treatment plant? We know?
I think, I took it as the repairing it after they tringed.
Gotcha.
That's what I took it to mean, too.
Yeah, well, and right under 4.2, it says, "The improvements that would be required for a potential user to make use of the city's recycled water include wastewater include." And so that would be something, if the people who use that water, they would need to make sure that the roadway and utility corridors were repaired.
After they're, after they're destroyed to lay the bike.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because they would need to monitor and measure the, the equipment to ensure the flow. They would need to install the pipelines from the wastewater treatment plant to the individual business. So those are the things that the, the end user would be required to do.
So, and before we go on from that, I would just say, some of the things that we already know are going to be required, even before doing the official assessment, we, we put some of those into the contract right off the bat, which are a new UV disinfection, disinfection system, installation of new flow meters, so we know we're counting the flow, installation of an emergency bypass valves, so that if we're not meeting, like the, the level of, that we need to, that it can come back to the plant, installation of dissolved oxygen analyzers for aeration and oxic basins. So that's part of how they manage the microorganisms that needs to be replaced. And then ultimately, a T, the system tie-in for water recycling, for recycled water to leave our plant. So those are some of the things we know pretty much from the get-go that would need to happen. And there could very well be more. Like, we do know that the building, the roof of that structure is totally in disrepair to the point-
Probably some of the walls now, guessing, are compromised.
Yeah, there's some, there's some other real problems down there that we anticipate. Anyway.
But those were the first listing of sort of the minimums that need to be addressed before we even started, because we knew those from our original master plan, correct? I mean, a lot of those things-
Well, actually, unfortunately, some of these things were not, none of these things are in the master plan, because the master plan is so out of date that some of the things in the master plan have already been done, but these particular things are just things that our staff has said, and that's going back to Crystal and John, and have said, "We really need to fix these." You know, you've heard staff talk about these UV disinfection system is so outdated that the light bulbs that, that are needed are, we have to buy them like on eBay from China, because they, they're not made anymore. So we're, it's a vulnerability in our system.
Need a whole new system.
Is this a UV system?
Yeah. It's the, it's the, it's basically the wastewater, if you remember, it goes through this very cool digester system. I think it's cool, because it's kind of like, all these microorganisms continue to digest the solid waste, and then at the end, the, the treated effluent, the water part, has to be disinfected by UV light before it goes out into the ocean outfall.
Do we have an estimated cost for all these things?
We don't yet. The only thing we have the estimated cost for is the T for the tie-in, because that's in this plan. And part of what we've been learning, meaning I, but the royal we, is that like, the costs of these things change so often. So part of like, any project that we're learning, the reason why we get engineers involved is they have to do the engineering and cost estimates, blah, 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 that are current. And then, when we go to get the funding or the grant, then we can say, here's the current cost estimate. So if there had been a cost, like, the cost estimate to replace something 10 years ago, you know, would be, obviously, much less.
And probably even last year.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So-
So these, these cost estimates that are on page 56, so those don't include any of those things that you just listed, correct?
Right. And so the summary of costs, so if you look at the cost estimate on 56, that, the first one, is literally just for the T. That's the tie-in. Seventy-two thousand on page 56?
Yeah.
And then, the cost estimate, the other cost estimate that's provided there would be that if the city, one of the alternatives that the feasibility study looked at is, what if the city basically did its own wastewater treatment and wanted to sell the water directly and provided the infrastructure? This is like, the cost for us of what it would take to provide a, like a, maybe a pipe to someplace where it could be used, so-
Which doesn't seem likely that-
No.
There's no place, the port would, could use the water probably, but it can't get to the port.
Yeah, unless we wanted to pay for it, or they wanted to coordinate to pay that, which is not necessarily feasible-
Too far down the road.
In terms of expense.
And I think the, the treatment level that would have to be done for that would be different than what we already are doing, because to have it be a boat wash or something like that, it would have to have higher levels that they would need to do.
Are we doing Class C now that goes into the ocean?
We don't, if you recall, one of the key things that I thought was very interesting in this report was clarified, is that we don't know exactly, because there's two different things. Class C, those classes have to do with recycled water. The effluent has a different grade, grading system. So to ensure that we can do Class C, we have to do a few more studies related to turbidity to, but it's thought that we are basically able to produce Class C. We don't have that finally known, is my understanding.
Yeah. I asked John, and he said we had Class B was going, was our effluent, but maybe he just spoke.
I think so. I mean, he might have been speaking in a general sense about it, but one of the key things that came out of this is that this idea that there's two scales-
Right.
And that's why it's really, it's always been super confusing to me, because we ask, well, what level do we produce? And there's no good answer, because we, the effluent is on a different scale than water that's used for water recycling. So I don't remember what page that's on, but there's kind of two graphs that show it in there, that we could look at.
Me to look?
If you want to find it. But does that make sense? I mean, why it's weird like that? Because I, it took me actually a long time to put my head around that, like that, oh, no wonder why we can't get a straight answer of, do we produce Class C water? It's because all of the criteria to make Class C, we don't normally monitor in exactly the way that is needed to make the determination. So we would have to do some extra tests, and we haven't done that yet.
So, one more question. So this number 410, or the 895, does that include, like, all these costs? And it totaled to about $208,000?
410, what, what are, what number are you talking about?
Okay, I'm looking at, on page 56, there's the 410, you know, if we do, we keep it here, or if we, you know-
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. The, the, two, the, does that include that, like, when I was looking at page 51, you know, they have all these costs to, to, you know, the 1,000, 1,000, 135,000, there's about $208,000 on page 50 and 51.
So let's, let's go in order then to the next, but you're, the answer is, estimated costs for infrastructure that are in the tables is costs. And the other kinds of costs, they don't have such specific numbers for-
Just pages like 4 and 5.
Okay. Just Melissa is pointing out, to go back to the level of treatments, to finish that conversation, on page 4-
That's the regular treatment levels.
That shows that what is required for the regular treatment levels, and, and the levels for beneficial purposes. But then there's the thing that says what we treat.
It's the level that would be good for irrigation only, basically, you know, or for low-level things that-
Yeah, and D is the lowest level, C is the next, A is the highest level. So- Okay.
It seems like at some point, we need to determine what we want to have come out of the 750,000, and what we want to consider on, after that. So-
What we want to consider on a what?
After the-
Yes.
After that spent. So to me, it seems like we, we don't need a master plan. I feel like the engineers would spend the whole 750,000 if we didn't kind of guide them.
Yeah.
And so I feel like if we were able to figure out how much, with this 750,000, how much could we get engineered to do what is left, what we could actually do?
Absolutely. And we have actually, Melissa and I have been really trying to hammer that home to the engineers of, we want to spend less on engineering and more on getting some things done. And, and here's like, what I have learned from talking to Business Oregon, not just engineers, is the process is that we have to have amendments made to our wastewater treatment plan. So that's why we need an update, because they cannot fund something that's not in our wastewater treatment plan.
The 2014 plan.
Yeah. But what they've recommended is, we don't do a whole update, we just do an update that says, you need to do these five things to be able to recycle water. We do an update like that, and then-
A section of it, uh-huh.
And that's what has been recommended. And then, you know, we adopt that update as a council, and then, and then we can spend the money on doing the things. So that's the thing that I feel like is most important for us to do. And then, it may be that this list of costs that's going to come up when they do this assessment, I mean, they want to do an assessment, you're right, they would love to do a full-on assessment. And I think they do have to go down there and look around with the clipboard and look at like, oh my gosh, you know, give us the full menu of like, we need to replace this roof, we got to, these are all things you need to do to be able to actually-
Stay in business.
Stay in business. And I mean, could you say replacing the roof is important? I mean, maybe it's a stretch to say we need a new roof to provide recycled water, but I mean, I've heard that if that water leaks on the electronic equipment and shorts it out, you know, we're, we're toast, you know, so-
Well, and when I, when I got on the council, like, the first couple months, I did a tour with Jacob, and at that time, the roof was leaking on the wall that holds all of the-
Electronic equipment.
Electronics and that. And that was six years ago, or seven years ago. So all of that time's gone on with that roof, that wall continually being wet and rotting, and-
Right.
And if that wall goes, then there's no plant.
Right. So anyway, to get back to your point, Gary, I think the thing is, we somehow try to get them to give us an assessment of what are the things that we need to do to recycle water, and what are the costs of them? And we then use the rest of the money to do as much of that as we can. But we want, if there are other things that go beyond the 750, that's then where we have like, our list of things, so that when we talk to the, the golf course company, or whatever, if we decide we want to do that, that we then say to them, hey, you guys, this is what it's going to take, you know, if we do decide to do that.
They're going to spend money, and then, then maybe the, the plant goes, and, and they don't get any effluent, and they've invested all of the money to get it out to the golf course, and there's nothing going out. So it seems like they got to be in on the deal to, to make it so that the plant's going to hold up for however much longer. It seems like a real balancing act to try to figure out all of that. It seems pretty complicated with how much they're going to engineer, and then, how much, so they are going to engineer what it'll take to spend the whole 750,000, but then, we're going to have an ask after that, and we need that engineered in a whole other bracket, kind of. And then what are they going to agree to? And then we have to, as a council, decide if we're going to stick to our guns, say, this is what we're going to ask if you want the effluent.
And they also need to know that we can't, according to this study, we can't give them a guarantee of-
For an amount.
Of an amount of water, which is something they've wanted.
Right.
And so, I mean, that, we need to make clear. They seemed pretty solid on that point in this study.
Mm-hmm.
You know, anything, you know, we had to keep the 30%, and then, but there will be times, we, we just can't. They said they'd recommended that we didn't even tell them we could. We couldn't and shouldn't.
And that 30% seems like an odd number, because in the summer, it's going to be different than it is in the winter, the volume of 30%.
Right, will be different.
So in the summer, 30% might not be enough to flush, or just enough, and almost everything goes to flush, and in the winter, there's all this extra.
Yeah, and I actually asked about that. And what I, I want to take, you know, if people have questions that we, one of the reasons, I mean, we could have invited the engineer, but we decided to just talk about it ourselves, and then if we have questions, in part, to economize, you know, because it's like, but I did ask that question, where's the 30% come from? And she said she looked at some other projects, or some other places that had that, and kind of got it from there. So it didn't sound like it, you know, that's where it came from. But that's, I think, a good-
It didn't sound like it wasn't really in, the perfect number in the report.
Yeah, and I mean, I think the thing is, if we want, if we wanted more information, it would have cost more. And so, you know, part of reading this, I felt like, gosh, this doesn't, there's some things that I would like to know, and I realize, we'll get to know some more when they do that next phase. And we don't need this to be a, like a Magnus Opus, because what we need it for is kind of like, is a stepping spot to the next step, you know? So, but if there are things we really want to know better, we could probably, you know, try to get them into the next step then, or, you know, ask questions if we have them. But I think, another thing to mention is that, you know, when we first did the scope of work on this with the engineer, which was multiple phases, I remember one of the early conversations we had, they were saying, well, if you can upgrade your water master plan, that's going to be, or your wastewater master plan, that's going to be a key, because then you can go and get grants, you know, like, once you update it. And that has been my experience, that's like, when I go, I've been trying as a mayor to go to all these, you know, infrastructure funding workshops, and trying to learn how we can do better. And, you know, that is sort of the little, the dance. It's like, you do an evaluation or a study, you get it in your water plan, and then you go for a grant, and then you say, oh, it's in the plan. So like, there's a little dance you have to do. But we know right now that that's changing, because a lot of this money is drying up, at least for now. And so, so that's why especially, we are really going to try to use this, it's my goal to really try to use as much of this money as we can to do things, so.
And, and just to speak on that piece, because I too have been talking to folks, and especially with the financing piece, and the key is that these ultimately are lottery funds. And one of the things that was told to me is, because I said, we really would like to get these things that we have to upgrade no matter what into this, to be able to work with this, and they agreed with that and said, that's really what lottery funds are supposed to do, are for capital projects and capital improvements, because that's one-time money that you can get, so it's not hiring someone, it's not things like that. It's to get the pieces of equipment that you really need, that are those things that are tangible, that we can, you know, Business Oregon, or you can show and say, this, these lottery funds purchase this for the town of Port Orford. So I think everyone's on the same page with that piece, that, that those are the things that we need. But just like the mayor said, and I too am learning this, if it's not in that plan, and you don't have that, then you can't get those funding things. But, you know, one of the things that we could have, like, the most Cadillac plan that we do, every test, and we look at I and I, and we do the smoke test, and we do the this and the that, and find, and they're awesome things to do, and the mapping and all of that, great things to do, so that we have that information moving forward. But the plan doesn't have to have all of those things in it in order to be valid, because that would be where you spend a lot of money on the engineering and have a really cool GWS plan, but then you haven't, don't have any resource left over to actually purchase the things that you need to make the plan happen. So it's the dance between planning to plan the plan, which I don't like, planning to plan the plan meetings, they make me crazy, but, and getting things done. But unfortunately, it's one of those things that chicken and egg, you have to have-
Have to jump through the certain hoops.
You do, you do.
There's reasons for it, you know, even though it's frustrating.
I'm wondering if we can, I, in my mind, I keep going back to water as our priority. So now, here, we're shifting all of, that 750 should have gone to our water.
But that was not what the grant, that was not how it was given.
No, I know. I'm just saying that we're spending all of this energy and on something that isn't a priority.
But I will, I will push back on that a little bit, in that our wastewater treatment plant needs help. We have, we need, we have improvements that we need to make there for the health of this community and for the health of that. So yes, water, I would say, is our number one priority, but wastewater-
Because you don't need a sewer plant if you don't have water.
Correct, yeah, there, yeah, again, chicken, egg, with the chicken on that one. But, but that's not nothing. I mean, we still are, are looked at very closely of things that we do, and, you know, we report all the time on our levels and things like that. That is an important component to the livability of this community. And so, you know, while it's maybe not priority one, I would say it's, you know-
It's two.
Two.
It's right up there.
Number two, Gary.
Number two in more ways than one.
In all the ways. So, sorry. But it really, it really is, it really is an important thing. So I think we, because we have to be able to, in this place especially, we have to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time, and this is one of those places where, you're right, it's not the most critical at this point, however, it is, it is-
And what we're, what we're trying-
And that's what we have the money for. We weren't, we, you know, we weren't given the option, do you want it for water, for wastewater, it was, this is what this money is for, and so we're going to-
For the golf.
We're going to make it, well, we're going to make hay with what we get.
We're, we're going to make use, we're trying to make as good of the-
Yes.
As good a use of this water, of this, of this money to, to help us with, to upgrade our wastewater system.
For the people of Port Orford.
For the people of Port Orford. And if the golf course is an opportunity to use recycled water that we want, that the council decides they want to do, it will be ready, we'll be ready to do that in a better way than we are now. So we will accomplish upgrading our wastewater treatment plant, which needs to happen.
It seems like if we can keep trying to leverage any way we can, that it's our primary outfall, that, and that it's on them to figure out how that happens, whether the golf course fails, or whatever, that that is our primary outfall.
This is our primary outfall.
The, the new-
The current, no, the current one is our, is our primary outfall, which is why we're going to keep some of that effluent, no matter what, to go through that, that will always be our primary.
But if all of the rest of it could go out there, that would make it a different-
Secondary outfall.
And if ours fails during a storm-
Correct.
That all of it could go out there.
Yes.
That turns it into more of a community asset than if they just take what they want, and all of a sudden, the winter, when the storms come, that would take our outfall out, they go, oh, no, we can't take anymore.
Right. It has to truly be an outfall. Right, it has to truly be an outfall. It can't just be a, when we want it, we can take it. It needs to be a secondary outfall for that exact purpose of redundancy, which again, we try to work on from our primary outfall. If something happens, we would then have a feasible, a usable outfall period that would have to go that direction.
Take the whole.
Right, so it not a spigot when you want it. It's, it would be truly our secondary outfall.
Or if it is a spigot, then it has to be the cost.
Or it has to be open.
It has to be.
Be able to be a primary if we lost.
If, if. Well, that, that would be the best. If if it's just a spigot, then we would want it, we would want to make sure it pays for, that there's a benefit to the community from it. Anyway, or to the city. So anyway, going on, let's look at, I, we pulled out to the next page, page 52 and on. So if you go through the alternatives, you know, really, unfortunately, I mean, they looked at the alternatives of could the city use it for other purposes? Like we asked about, could it be used for firefighting? Could it be used for?
Boat wash.
Boat wash or other things that the city could possibly use. And it turned out that those things would either be very expensive. Well, it turned out they'd be expensive because of like piping and stuff and or we'd have to be treating the water to a much higher level. Like you couldn't use it for firefighting unless you had it.
Non-structured.
Non-structural, like for wildfire firefighting. And so.
You can't put it in the air, it has to be in the ground.
I think you could put it in the air, but I don't think you can put it, like, I I got the impression.
The sprinkling had to be ground sprinkling and not aerated to where the wind can pick it up.
Well, maybe that's it. I didn't see an expl, I didn't find the explanation for it. But we, basically, you couldn't do that readily. And to do like a car wash or whatever, it'd have to be the very highest level of treatment. So the conclusion was basically, yeah, well, those things are feasible if you wanted to pay for the money, but it didn't really make sense. So that leaves us with alternative four, which is the private investor owned infrastructure, which is the golf course option. So that's here. And so that part seems like one of the more important parts. And Sarah, as you pointed out, the costs, there are. Basically, what they're saying is that, you know, this would, couldn't be feasible for the city if the costs are covered. So in this list of things, you know, the number five is going to be covered by this chunk of money. That's the update to the, to the wastewater, wastewater facilities plan. But some of the other things, you know, are not. Prepare a water use agreement, that is actually probably covered because we have money for legal. So that's covered in this if we wanted to do that. And then, but there's the whole developing the system development charge methodology. And what that was, was this idea of how much would we charge for the water? Like, how much is going to really cost for us? Because we're going to have staff time in making sure everything's working and going out and monitoring the water. And there'll be a relationship if we do this with the golf course. But there's going to be additional things.
Ongoing.
Ongoing things that we have to deal with all the time. So we have to charge enough so that that our costs are covered and perhaps then some, so that we.
For down the road, as things go.
So then what do we need to do to figure out those costs?
Well, that's where she's called it a system development charge study. And this is like, we haven't, we talked a little bit about the, what is this called, the water rate studies? Where you figure out how much does it cost to run the plant? And what percentage of that cost is covered by, you know, we have, all of our rate payers are already paying in. So all of a sudden, you'd have some other people that are using it. And so you just figure out, you'd have to, there'd be some engineers or whoever does that would figure out what, what the costs are and how we make sure it's fair.
There is a question with that. Say it's a, say it's a flat rate cost that is, I'm assuming would go to Elk River Property Development, correct?
Well, that's what we would potentially be able to do if we're negotiating.
Is there, is there, can we, is there a legal way that we can add an extra percentage onto that flat rate to cover future? That would cover future, you know, repairs and costs and stuff?
Yeah, well, I think what we would do, yeah, you mean within, on our side, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think one of the key things that all of this gets us to start thinking about is if we do want to go down the path of having that conversation with them of, like, what is it going to take for our city to feel like this is a good idea? Then we think about what are the things that it would take? So the idea of like, if we have future repairs, we need for you to kick in however much or whatever, or.
And that would be, so those system development charges, SDCs, that that is sort of the longer term planning. So it probably would be, yes, you, maybe we charge per gallon of what we think that it is, but then also a chunk of change that goes in for a system development charge of what's going to happen to to keep the system running and and improvements even beyond that. And that, but that would be something that I believe that the engineers would come up with, with us to study that because it's based on, again, rates and number of users and what would happen. You know, it would even be, exactly, all the costs that would go into that. And then I think it would be smart, just like we're doing now with the rates at minimum to keep it at least with the rate of inflation, you know, the CPI, to to move it forward so that it wouldn't be one static cost. It could be, you know, adjusted in.
Each year.
For each year, however long it was, the agreement. Because we are going to have to think about those things. Because, you know, again, we've, living in a time when inflation is doing all sorts of wackadoo things. And so we have to be able to account for that. And that only keeps you even, that's not helping you get ahead and continue with those things.
That's where I think if we have an extra percentage that goes to whoever, that that goes into our, our fund for, you know, future repairs and maintenance costs and things like that, that's going to be a key element for us.
And I think we'll get help from the engineers when looking at what is the system actually going to entail? And then what will it take to maintain that moving forward and then add that amount?
And then one of the scenarios was for them to own the pipe and one was for us to. But it seems like it'd be best for them to own it if that's an option.
Yeah, and I think the, yes, absolutely.
Another conversation that we had had just so kind of as transparency to think, you know, at first we were thinking, well, maybe we could use it to irrigate Buffington Park's ball field in the summertime or to do that. Like, what would it be if we split that? And, you know, had it for this use, but then also maybe the city use. Because remember, when you look at this, it's like, well, what would happen if the city themselves used it? And then another option is, well, what would happen if someone in the city used it? And then the other one was, well, what happens if someone outside the city uses it? And that's kind of where we're, this whole thing has come up because of someone outside the city wanting to use it. And the key was, if that end user, for example, we say, okay, this end user out in the urban growth boundary or beyond our city limits uses this, if we were to take pieces of that, then we would also be responsible for monitoring and pipe and all of those things. Whereas if we say, okay, no one in the city wants to use it, no one within the town wants to use it, although it's a right of first refusal, right? We would have the right to say, yes, we want to use this and use this recycled water. Side note, that does not include what we already have, which is we want to use our water within our own plant. So we will be doing that anyway for the sprayers and things like that to hook back up as the plant was intended to be, to use the clarified.
Was it used at one time and it's, it's down now?
Correct, and there was an issue with electrical and an issue with a pump. There was a.
Now, does that, that eventually is.
We want that back on, we want that to use.
That eventually goes out.
Yeah.
As treated affluent.
Correct, yeah.
It's no loss for the volume, we just wouldn't be using fresh water.
Yes, it helps us to avoid using fresh water.
On our water side, if we can get that back up to where it needs to be.
Huge.
So, yeah, and there's.
That could be in on the.
Right.
That's like the highest priority.
It is the highest, that is, yes, very high priority, to be able to use that as the sprayers to loop it around. And we kind of have a MacGyver system that we did to do that anyway, just with sort of a sump pump and sprayers. That was a fun trip to the hardware store. What do I need? Trying to figure out, but we got it and it's been working. So, you know, sometimes low tech works too. Bubble gum and baling wire. But to do that piece, so that piece was already be part of it, as well as us using, if we had a situation where we needed to have an emergency return to plant. So again, if something happened and our UV bank went out or something happened that our, our numbers weren't good enough to go out into the ocean, then we would be able to flip a valve that it would come back around to be reprocessed. That's all ours and our own part. So that's not what I'm discussing of city use. Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that, that that already is what we want to do, plan to do, how the plant is designed to use. But another piece, again, rights of first refusal. If we try to take pieces of it, take some, maybe some port, does cut at the port or some does go, then that's not a good plan. Because if it all goes to this one user, then they are liable for that affluent out there, and they have to monitor it there, and they are liable for the pipes, and they are liable for the pumps, and they are liable for all of that. So that would have to be specifically written in. But, so this is kind of an all or nothing sort of a thing. Like, if they are the ones that want it, then they are the ones where the liability is going to lie.
And that came up, we, that we had a conversation with somebody at DEQ where that, she helped us understand that, that that was.
That was my big question.
A problem somewhere else. But apparently, in earlier iterations of this discussion, there was the idea that, oh, if we put, like, maybe we could put fire hydrants out along there. But that's not really a good idea because that water, I don't think, can be used for that kind of firefighting. And it would disrupt, it would create this situation that we're Melissa's saying, we're then.
We become liable.
We become liable for it because we're using it and we just shouldn't go down there if we're going to go down this path.
And it's never been a part of our plan to do that, so.
No.
So anyway, but just to go back to this list of things and all these like estimated costs. These are, these are the kinds of things that we will need to do. All the kinds of things that we would need to do if we wanted to move forward. And that doesn't even go to the costs of like actually doing any of the, of the infrastructure.
Now, on page 56, the 895,000, that would be the cost of the project of taking it out to the golf course from the plant?
I think that was just some estimate that they, that the engineer did.
That's what they're referring to there.
Yeah.
Well, that's for a user located near the northern end of Highway 101, within the city limits, cost for installation would be that. So that's if someone close to the city limits right there, that's what it would.
That would be, that's the city owned water recycling infrastructure. So that's if the city, that's the alternative to, would be if the city decided to just build it and sell the water, which is not really a, the reason they framed it this way is because they did it like no, no action, the city owns it, somebody else owns it. So they did it in that way. It's not exactly what, you know, how it would work, but.
But that's around the $900,000 is what they're thinking could cost the golf course to get it out there.
Might be more.
To get it to the edge of the city limits.
Oh, just, okay.
Because this, this is our point. This is our feasibility study for what the city would need and what the city's doing. We are, our engineers were not to be working on things for the golf course. This isn't about that. This is just for if a city use.
Oh, so if, okay, but that gives them a clue as to what it's going to cost them to.
It would, and they have their own.
They have their own engineers and people and, yeah.
So, yeah, and they're going to be responsible for the engineering of that and the cost of putting it in. And if they own it, then maintaining it and.
And being liable for it.
And paying liability insurance.
So I think that this list, I think the list on page 53 is really like one of the things for us to be, you know, seeing, like, we've already had, we're already having, we already have a letters of interest from potential end users. Now, you know, we have to, we're going to be using, updating the water facility plan. And then, to my mind, it seems like once we get that, the information from that, that's when we could have a discussion with the golf course people. That's when we have a discussion with ourselves first and say, and this is what we have to start thinking about. Okay, this is what it would take. This is how much it's going to cost. You know, do we want to move forward with asking the golf course people? This is what it's going to take for our city council to be interested in this? Do we want to do that? I mean, that is a pathway.
Because I'm wondering if we even had phases that, within our own framework, that this is, this is the, what we're going to go for first. And if they balk, then these are places we could back off on still getting what we want. We're just, to me, I want to get as much out of it as we can.
Well, we're going to get as much out of the 750 first, I mean.
But then even after that.
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it's, what you're saying is.
This is going to be expensive for them.
Yeah.
More than.
So are you saying at the cost of them?
Right.
Negotiate, you're saying drive a hard bargain, basically.
And, and so the bar, if they go for our Cadillac, then great. And if not, you know, we're, they have a plan that we're still going to be happy with this, but we're going to ask for this. So we have in our minds kind of what.
You're tipping your hand already.
Yeah, it's a little bit awkward because we have to.
Not even there yet.
We have to.
We have to know what we.
Yeah, yeah, and we would have to, we would have to negotiate. And so, I mean, just to say that, I, I don't know what the matters are in terms of executive session. But like, I would think we would, if we are in a matter of negotiations, I mean, we have things that we want to be transparent and talk about publicly as a council. But if you're in negotiations, then that are financial or real estate or, I don't know, legal, you probably would want to have some of those discussions in executive sessions. So. Anyway.
So in speaking with the engineers, some of these estimates, they're just estimates, they're not solid, I mean.
You mean in these parentheses?
Parentheses.
Absolutely.
The ones on page 53 still?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm still on 53.
I've just.
Jumping.
Still on 53.
Yeah, super estimates, I think, yeah.
Yeah, because some of this looks low and some of it looks.
Yeah.
Well, and this was two months ago. And it could have already changed from that. I mean, truly, like, it's, this is a moving target.
Yeah.
So how much is left at 750? We don't know yet.
Oh, do we know if we spent anything out of the 750 yet?
Well, we've spent like 25 to, somewhere between 25 and 50,000 to get this mobilized and get this study going.
And then that just seems like way more than we should have spent for it, but.
But it's, this, the money was intended for this purpose, to do a something like this to do. So we're kind of playing with house money at this point. Because this is what that grant is for, is to look at the feasibility, is this something that will work? And so, and engineers are, it's just an expensive process. And so that's why we have the 750 to, to look at it, but.
But 100% agreed that it's, it's maddening that things cost so much to do because I think a lot of us, especially like a lot of us in this town are shoestringers. I mean, I certainly am a shoestringer, we do everything on, you know, do it on a shoestring, that's how we do things. But to be eligible for grants, state and federal, you know, it's just like we were talking about with the water filtration system. They're not, they're not going to fork over a million dollars if you're going to fix it with bubble gum.
Plan, yeah.
You have to like really be doing it properly and whatever that that means, you have to get the engineers to sign off.
And it's not even to fix something, it's to upgrade things. Because many of the things that you have to do are to upgrade your system to current standards and current things. So it's not as if you can get it back to, you know, the, you're right, of where we, of where we thought it was, you know, that worked 50 years ago.
It's a brand new technology.
Or we can retrofit it with the new technology with kind of the same infrastructure, you know, in that example. We're trying to, trying to figure out, because there's new technologies in the last 50 years that are more efficient, so.
Won't last as long, but.
Well, yeah.
So a couple of other items here, just big, well, first of all, before we go to like a little bit more big picture stuff. So a couple of other items here, just big, well, first of all, before we go to like a little bit more big picture stuff. Does anybody have any other specific questions or things they want to raise? I see a lot of yellow on yours, Sarah. Do you have any other things or was that just your, your reading? I know, good note, good.
Your annotations.
Yeah.
Close reading, you're close reading. It's good, it's good.
So you, you've mentioned, you know, that we need to have the plan in place to get other grants and stuff. Would we be looking at getting more funding?
Well, we to get to access the seven fifty or that pot of money, we're calling it the seven fifty minus what we've spent, we have to have the items upgraded in our plan. So we can't just spend, we can't go out and spend the money on the UV filter yet because it's not in our water master plan.
Right.
So we need to upgrade it. And then, yes, I mean, ideally someday we would go after maybe some additional grants, but I, I can't see that far yet. Because I think we're, because we are prioritizing the water grants or I am right now, and that's like big enough lift.
Okay. So, so yeah, my, I guess my point was we're not going to have to get more money for, to put into this whole package at this point.
I think we're trying to figure out after the seven fifty, what we're going to ask the golf course to spend.
I think it's going to be more than whatever that, I mean, the, the number of, the amount of money of upgrades down there that are going to be needed is going to be more than what we have.
Cause it could be.
Yes.
Two or three million or.
Really? Oh, yeah. Yeah, a lot. And so ideally, I mean, ideally, and this is what just is like so frustrating to me sometimes. You know, we could, we could have been getting these grants that we've been working on, you know, like instead of running our noses into a brick wall, like if we could be getting one and getting it done, then we get the next one and you just kind of keep working on them and knock things off. And, you know, we could do three or four on the water side and then say, okay, let's go do a few on the wastewater side. We could really turn a dial. But anyway, I mean, that would be my, that is my aspiration, but so we have to get there someday, but.
But the hard part right now is you can't just go get a grant to go buy the thing. You have to get the grant with the plan that you looked at and you pull it off the shelf and you say, these are the things that were identified and then you could go maybe find a grant, but then it's a competitive process and then you have to wait. You have to have up to date cost estimates, which means you have to rehire the engineers. You then also have to have the money to match in many of these grants, which means you can't, we can't be running our coffers to zero here. You, you know, to have these match monies, it just, it's, it's a really, really, the more you learn about it, the more frustrating it gets, I have to say, because it's like, we just need to go get these three pieces of equipment, for example. But you just can't do that. And it's really, it, it gets really overwhelming. Because there's always all the other little things too. Like you can't just focus on the, on that one thing. It's, it's, it's.
So we can't, we can't really make any agreements with them when we don't know if we're going to have to put out more money or not. Right? I mean.
Well, I think once we, like, one of the things I've sort of have mentioned to them is like, okay, you know, you're trying to like hook up a Cadillac to a jalopy here, you know, or you're trying to, realistically, we have a system that's struggling and, you know, it's amazing that we've done so well with all of our infrastructure, meaning that it's limping along because of, uh, you know, we have staff that's super resourceful. But it just continues to deteriorate and deteriorate, as you said. So we're, we're coming up against the time when, on water and wastewater. So, um, I think we're going to have to.
Well, I just was going to say, this, I mean, it, this can be an opportunity for us if we can negotiate a really good deal to make this happen, that's, that's mutually beneficial to the city to get these things because we've been working like crazy trying to get these grants and for years due, but trying to, to do these things and it just, it takes a really long time. So if you have something like, for instance, this seven hundred and fifty legislative pass through that came to us, or you have an, an investor or a situation like that, that is one way to move the dial quicker to get some of these things taken care of. So I mean, I think there, we need those improvements for the city of Port Orford. And that is a, a funding path that could be taken. And it's going to be work and things all the way through. We just have to figure out what is going to make the most sense to decide to make these agreements and to do this. But I think they do, they do have investors. They do have people who are willing to put, to front load capital to make this happen. They've, I mean, how many years have they been doing this? They really, you know, and the people that came to visit are, are very interested in making this thing happen and they actually have capital to lay out. And so it might not be that we have to go get all the grants to do that. If you make this partnership, which is the whole reason to make the partnership, right? So that you get that, that funding and to get that help. But there will be strings and there will be lots of work that will need to happen between that. But that is the whole point of them wanting to, to do this. And again, just for my own personal, recycling that water is a good thing to do.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I mean, I think that the whole option and the idea, everyone, no one's questioning that, but it becomes, what is it going to take in order to have it make sense for the city of Port Orford to make these, these changes and to make these agreements? I think that's what is laying at your feet, city mothers and fathers to, to decide. And this is one part to help you be educated enough to make that decision. That's what this is. So.
And also to just, before we go on, just to say a big picture part of it that I know I've been wrestling with is that, you know, we've, we've had the conversations about, there's sort of the city of Port Orford, which is our, you know, Mayor Cox used to call it running the business of the city, which is we are running a, a water company and a sewer company and this public safety company or we're, we're running services that have costs. And, um, you know, we have revenues and costs and it's all very nuts and bolts. And then, um, and so there could be a real benefit to this because we have equipment that we have to do to. There's also the part that is the city of Port Orford that is the community of Port Orford. And we know there have been discussions in the community about the, um, you know, how will golf course change our community? There's a lot of people that say, oh, it will be good for the economy. But then there's also some other questions that arise about, you know, where will people live or where, what, who will be the workforce? And where will it come from? Or, and those are also things that affect our community and potentially our city. And it's been really interest, I mean, I've just been wondering how we wrestle with both of those things because, you know, we could have this discussion about, oh yeah, maybe they'll give us a hundred thousand to fix the roof on our wastewater treatment plant and that'll save the city a hundred thousand. But then if it means that we have a lot more empty million dollar houses in our community and there is nobody to run the Meals on Wheels, the fire department. You know, like there's, there's sort of, they seem like apples and oranges, but it's all connected. And I'm, I will just tell you, I think it's hard to figure that out. So I think, I mean, that's hard for us all to figure out, but that's.
The lawyer did mention three hundred jobs and you, in his letter, and I mentioned it to Troy and he thought that wasn't, he was poo pooing that whole idea that they're in the county and then we shouldn't have anything to do with that. But if the lawyer says that there's going to be three, I heard sixty five jobs a while back. But that's a lot of homes that, you know, are they going to end up providing those homes? Are they going to be pulling people from jobs like Public Works? To, for employees out there and then all of a sudden, different businesses in town and the city are losing employees and then we don't have, then we have to be looking for employees.
Yeah, and I think.
No homes for anybody.
Those are all really, I think, interesting.
Like we can bring it up.
Yeah. And I think, um, you know, some of those concerns that we have, I think are things, good things to like write down if you're a note taker because, I mean, I think we can potentially with these people negotiate in terms of the nuts and bolts of the wastewater, but we can also negotiate in terms of,
Or at least try.
Or at least try to talk about housing. And it's kind of interesting because it's not in our city, you know, I think we would be in a stronger position if it was within our city. It's in the county. On the other hand, I think from our conversation with those people, I think that they're interested to understand what our concerns are and to try to be good neighbors. And so I think if we have concerns, if the community has concerns, it would be good to look at them and assess them and see like, well, are these the kinds of concerns that we can come up with any kind of mitigation for? You know, to propose. So that's sort of a big picture around the nuts and bolts of this, but I think it's really important for us to be thinking about it. And I know, I've certainly heard about these things from our, our residents and I'm sure you have all heard about them from our residents' concerns. And, um, both ways. And so how we balance those, I mean, I, I kind of like the idea of, you know, really looking at pros and cons and making a list or just having some actual, um, like reasoned deliberation instead of just like, oh, here's what we're doing on our gut feeling and just saying, okay, why are, like, how are we making a decision and why? To me seems like.
And it seems like this is the only thing that you really have any lever on with any of it because you don't have, you, you aren't in the count, we don't, you don't make those decisions. And so this idea, you know, we don't, we don't, you don't oversee any of that. This is the one piece that you do have any lever on. And it's, it's interesting because we've talked about, you know, having town halls or having people, you know, talk about it. And there's, again, we hear both sides from, from a lot of folks. And always before, at least what I've noticed since I've been here is you folks are always like making a teeny tiny little land use decision based on a CUP, a conditional use permit. And that's the only thing you can really rule on or make a decision on, right? It's just this little land use decision.
Extend it or not.
To extend it or not. That's all you, that's all that you can say about it. Cause that's all you're deciding on. Whereas with this, it would be more interesting to have conversations and to have people, you know, reach out to you and, or to reach out to say, you know, how do we, how do you feel about this? What are the plans? I mean, I think there's a lot of road between here and making that decision that, that the, the community needs to weigh in as well.
I have a question regarding this. Just to full circle, a little, um, it's sad that our permit expires in one year in November of twenty twenty six.
Yeah.
Have you talked to the engineers about that?
It's, it gets extended every five years. It's like one of those things where it's been renewed. It was initially issued, I forget when, but then it's repeatedly renewed every five years. It has to be renewed or every.
Do we have to do anything to renew it? I mean, do we have to have certain upgrades or? So some of this could, you know, play into that renewal. Some of the things that we might have to do in order to renew our permit.
Potentially.
Okay.
I don't think we have, um, any.
There were parameters that changed. I was just looking at something today that had with like twenty twenty two, I think was one where they, it had, it had changed or maybe twenty one, it had changed. And so from sixteen to twenty one, I think it was that they had to, there were some updates that had been mandated by the state. And so they did change the permit a little bit. And I know John Isador does work with the, with DEQ because the, the permitting agency is DEQ. And so that's, that's who does that. And it had been in the permit with this idea of water recycling and it had been put in there long ago. And even before this, John, one of the conversations was, well, do you still foresee that this is an issue or something that you would want to do? And John, at that time, you know, he'd just been here not very long, was like, oh, I don't know if they're still looking at that or not. And the guy said, well, then you better leave it in because to change it is a huge process. And so because we have it in, it's kind of, we're grandfathered and kind of set in this parameter. And so they do have discussions and John Isador does work with DEQ when there is an updated permit situation. And yes, it'll be reevaluated this next year.
Okay. So we have one other really kind of, if there's no other specific questions about those things, um, other big piece of information that's new information, which is, um, last week, um, Business Oregon contacted us, contacted me to say that there actually may, may possibly have to be a thirteen percent reduction in this chunk of money. And that's because.
Seven fifty?
Yeah. Because, um, you guys know that there was a big federal tax cut that was done in March of this year. And Oregon's tax code is tied to the federal government tax code. So whatever happens in Washington happens to Oregon's taxes also. And so the state government is totally having trouble right now because all of the agencies are being asked to do a fifteen percent budget cut across the board. So for operations for, um, and, and in this case, all of the agencies are being asked to propose changes. And so this grant, because of the type of funding it is, they're proposing it for a reduction. And, um, we don't know. So the, basically that would cut a hundred and three thousand off. It's a thirteen percent reduction for this. It would cut off a hundred and three thousand. So it would be the six.
Return that, what, we'd have to return?
We don't have it and get it. So we would just not get it. So, um, it's not a done deal. Because what, what, this is all in flux and the person at Business Oregon literally has told us all along. Don't worry about this. You, you could, you have time to spend it because if you recall when we got this, it was kind of like this time when we were in flux with different interim, we weren't, didn't have an administrator and we were.
No, any of it.
We didn't have a lawyer. We didn't have a finance person. We, you know what I mean? Like we, we kind of had to get our act together before we could start working on this. Um, and we had water problems and any, anyway. So she had always told us, don't worry, you can take your time. This money is not going anywhere. You, because it was lottery funds versus legislatively allocated funds of a different sort have to be spent within the biennium, but these funds did not have to. Uh, apparently this is the first time this has ever happened, that they're considering this. It may not come to fruition because it has to go back to the legislature. All of these budget cuts that are going to be across the board throughout the state. So we don't really know yet, but they just wanted to tell us so that we could plan conservatively. So, um, as I mentioned, we're trying to have, trying to schedule the kickoff meeting for the next phase with the engineer that's going to do the water wastewater facility plan assessment. And so we're going to be saying to them, okay, we're going to have to shrink to fit right now. We're going to have to shrink your planning effort to fit. And yet again, like we've been saying all along, we want to make sure there's money left to do the things. And it could be that we'll get it back. It could be we'll get the money in the long run that the legislature will say, no, we already allocated that money. We can't take it back. But that's sort of what's up now. So anyway, that's sort of the latest news.
Well, and so to reiterate, so we're going to want the engineers to come up with the amount that we're going to need besides this, this, if it's six fifty or seven fifty, that we're going to be asking. So we, we're going to need the engineering on that ahead before we.
Well, and I think there's different levels of engineering was just to clarify. Like I think what we can get from them is like an assessment that says, let's say there's ten things that need to be done. And the first five are like the ones that we identified as, and some of those are going to need like a whole design and a whole this, that, and the other. And that's like much more expensive, but maybe the other five, they can say, yeah, and you're going to need to do these other five things, but we're not going to spend the money to do the full engineering. You know what I mean?
And that could be the next phase when we make.
Go back to have the negotiation or discuss things with the golf course people.
MOU.
Yeah. So I think that's kind of how it would roll out. It's still, it's sort of, um.
It's a little chess game.
It's a chess game and all these words, you know, like feasibility study, plan, update. They all like mean certain things that we're kind of learning as we go exactly. I mean.
And it is interesting because some things, if you get, so for example, a lift station that needs to be rechained or something happens, if it's the same type of capacity and it's the same type of pump and the flanges are attached at the same place on the wherever, you can do that because it's kind of like for like. And you don't have to re-engineer the whole thing or whatever. But let's say you bought that lift station fifty years ago and now there's. and now there's upgrades and there's different things. And they moved the slot A, tab B, you know, that they did. Well, then you have to go and have it completely re-engineered and you have to have it whatever and it needs to be up to. So it really depends on what it is, how aged it is, what's the replacement look like to where, again, some things are kind of swap out, plug and play, and some things are a whole other huge project.
Because it seems like, yeah, some things like John could just call a vendor and say, oh, you know.
Just pump one out, I need another one to do it. And it's.
Yeah, and just order it. And then other things have to be like, the engineer has to be totally involved and.
And then you have to have the contractor that's also doing something different. It's, that has been, again, another learning thing. Like, some things are pretty easy to do and some things are.
And then some things are, if the funding comes from the federal government, there are certain requirements. And if it comes from the state, there's other requirements about like how much. So it's just.
And then what was the piece about, it seems like I've heard a couple of times, it's a lift station or something would go away if the pipeline went through.
I think in the original plan, they were talking about the Wyoming lift station, that because if this was the plan that was decided upon, ERPD has purchased a piece of land right near the wastewater treatment plant. And with their, with that pump or with that situation, that in their original plan, it would have made the Wyoming lift station, which is aged, it would have made it obsolete. It wouldn't, it would, you wouldn't need to have it there because of the rerouting and what had happened. We don't know.
It's incoming, right?
It's incoming, yes. But it would be based on how it was pulling, that it would have enough to pull it all the way up the hill to there and then down into the, into the wastewater treatment plant. But that's been one that's kind of, has been in the plan, has been out of the plan. It's, you know, this has been going on a long time. And so I think, you know, looking at what this would actually, in today's dollars and today's engineering with today's equipment, what that's going to look like is part of these next steps to say, do we spend money to figure out what that looks like and how? And write that into an agreement that says, well, we, we would need this, this and this to happen with this much per gallon, at this much, whatever to.
And maybe that came, I mean, if, if Councilor Pogwist was here, he might have remembered. You know, maybe that was part of what a previous council said, what, what is it going to take for us to feel like this is a good deal for the city? At that point, maybe that was what the good deal was for the city. And, and maybe that is still something that is, that would be something we would want to put on the table. I think it's, it's important for us to, you know, think about those things, basically.
And that we, in the end, don't have any money coming out of the city for any of this.
Yeah. For their infrastructure, that would be correct, nor liability. Again, that's my big, big thing. Although many of the pumps and, or pipes and things will be bored and will be in our rights of way, because that's where you, you know, the utilities go. So there is going to have to be a lot of working together because they will be boring into our streets, you know, with all that infrastructure.
And, you know, like, one of the things that was proposed as part of this scope of work, for example, with the 650, 750, was that they could do mapping of some of the, like, our lines, we don't have well-mapped. And, but it's pretty expensive. So, you know, the question is, do we, it gets back to what are the, going to be the highest priorities? Do we, or maybe that's something we ask for help with, you know, for, from the developer, we'd like you to map these so that you're not going to break our lines. Or if you break our lines, you're going to have to fix them. But, you know, we all know.
Well, for sure that.
We're learning that fixed pipes are pipes that are going to re-break later. You know, we know that all too well. I was thinking to myself, actually, when I had the meeting with those gentlemen, how I'm coming at this from a perspective of having like 50 or tons of 50 to 70-year-old pipes that are just like breaking and bursting all the time. And they're coming at from the perspective of like, oh, let's build some new pipes and they're going to last for a long time. You know, you don't have to worry about them breaking. And it's just, you know, it's a different, different perspectives.
Well, anything's feasible if you have enough money, I think, is this, is what this basically comes down to, is what, what is feasible and what can you do? And if you have the money and you have the time and you have those resources. So it's hard for us because we don't have that. You know, we just don't. And so, but there are people and developers and things that they do, because they have a vision of something that they want to have. So they're willing to have those conversations.
So now, I, I don't know why I keep getting stuck on this. If, if the plant goes down and we need two or three months to do whatever the repair is, do we need to have a, some kind of a, are we, we just face that when the time comes? We don't kind of rethink it? I mean, what if?
I think, I mean, if our plant goes down and we're, we're not able to meet the highest standards, we, I mean, the, the first plan is we have to fix this emergency bypass thing so it comes back through the plant and can be redone. I mean, that's a very top priority.
Or it's fined.
What? Yeah, yeah. If we have affluent that is, that's not meeting the standards and there's a problem and we put it out into the ocean, I mean, we would get fined and we would take action to improve our situation. But I mean, if it goes on for an extended period, I think that's, you know, I don't think it would be, I mean, we're not going to be pouring raw sewage into the ocean, I don't think. We're going to be pouring water in that might have too much, you know, bacteria or something. You know what I'm saying? It's not going to be like, I don't think we would get to that situation. Anyway.
Because it sounded like when the computer went out, you know, I don't know what other kind of things, but there was raw sewage that was in the plant and.
When the computer went out, what?
In the sewer plant.
Oh, when the pump went out. Remember a couple, whenever that was last month, when the pump, the electricity.
Oh, right, right.
The computer went out.
There was a backup.
And then it shut things down.
Yeah, right.
That didn't go out to the ocean. That didn't go.
No, but that was all within the plant. But if that was something that, I don't know how many other things like that there are that could just all of a sudden, we're not running.
And I think at that point, if, that's why, if there's a, if there is a, a problem there and numbers go too high or whatever, then it's our role to alert DEQ. And we have to turn it, we monitor all that, all the time, which is some of the things that the DO, you know, the dissolved oxygen and the other things that's part of that monitoring that we have to turn in to DEQ. And so if something were to happen, then we have to call them. And then we have the whole group of them to help us troubleshoot what we would do and what would happen. We also have our Level Two certified operator, Josh, down there now. So we have a, a good person with the, you know, proper credentials and all of that. And we have a, sort of a mentor for him at the highest level named Bob Dillard, who monitors and helps lots of little plants along the coast.
And we also have.
So he's our, he's our official, you know, kind of overseer. So if there's an issue, Josh knows to call him. He's, has lots of experience, has the highest credentials. That's why we have him on our payroll to make sure. And then also, if something catastrophic were to have happened, then that is when we call DEQ and say, we are having this issue. What do you want us to do? What can you, what support can you offer? So that's why we, that's why we monitor and send that information to them is so that they're aware of what, of what is happening with that. And again, our practices have improved based on our hiring and our knowledge and our understanding and what we're doing. So, so we aren't just out alone on that situation. If something were to happen, that's why we would call DEQ and then they would help us figure out what to do if we had a catastrophic situation. Yeah.
Okay. Well, any other questions or comments or considerations?
Just for clarity, because I'm, there's been so much. So our next plan is to have the engineers, you listed all the things that needed upgrading. So they will assess that and come back with.
Yeah. And they will, they will, those things that need to be upgraded, what they're going to be doing is they're actually going to go, we know these things are on the list. They're going to go down and kind of look at it with fresh eyes and come up with the evaluation of what are the things that you need to upgrade to do recycled water?
Components.
What are the components? What are the cost estimates? And we're going to, that's the next phase. And that is in the scope of work we already approved. So that's, we're going to kind of move straight into that. And I don't, because we haven't been able to schedule it yet, I don't know exactly how long that's going to take, if that's like a three-month thing, if it's a, you know, we don't know yet. So we'll be able to report back on that once we figured it out. It looks like that meeting might be the, we might be able to schedule it the last week of November. Yeah, so that's the next step. And I think until then.
We're not in a big rush, although it'd be nice to get, so we don't have a breakdown.
Yes, yes. We're in a big rush and we want to spend that money. I mean.
Right, as soon as.
That was, yeah. So.
Yeah. Because we are trying to move this forward, you know, trying to go through this process in a thoughtful, transparent way, thus the meetings, to have you discuss it and ask questions and do, but then trying to move it along.
So that's with that, I think that's, that's all, that's all, folks, for this meeting.
Unless you have other questions or other thoughts.
It's really nice to have a work session where we can just chat and talk about these things. And, yeah, outside of a council meeting. So thanks, everybody, for making the time.
Although that's next Thursday. So, see you in a week.
Okay, with that, I will conclude this work session at 6:50. Thanks, all.
Thank you.